The regular hybrid meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the Greater Boca Raton Beach and Park District is now called to order. It is Monday, May 17th, 2021. The time is 5:15 PM. Joanne, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogelstein?
Here.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioners, any changes to the agenda today? I don't see any hands up. Okay. Let's move to public requests. We have Councilwoman Monica Maat, who has a public request. Councilwoman, oh, there she is. Welcome. How are you?
Hi, everyone. Hi, Commissioners. Executive Director Harms, how is everyone today?
Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I wanted to just bring you guys up to speed on something that has not come before council, but will be coming soon. I am working with city staff on an ordinance to prohibit polystyrene foam containers from being used on city property and at city events. And, I mean, it's on all city properties. And also not allowing balloons or confetti to be used in any of our city parks or on any city property. And I just wanted to let you guys know, since you help us operate and maintain our parks, to let you know that I was doing this, to just get some feedback from you to see what your thoughts are.
Well, thank you. I think it's long in coming, and I think Commissioner Ernst might want to weigh in on this. Wasn't this one of your campaigns, one of your items of interest?
Yeah, it started really with the county. The county implemented something, and I couldn't understand why Boca wouldn't at least follow the county on the Mylar balloons at a minimum, because Mylar balloons, you know, as we all support Gumbo Limbo, Mylar balloons are, and all the things that go with the plastics and everything, end up with the turtles, and it's terrible. And you see them out in the ocean, so I think it's great. I would just say, whatever we can do to have something that is enforceable and consistent and, you know, it's the right thing to do, particularly in all the parks and the beaches. So whatever, I would be encouraged that whatever the city does, it's for everyone. It's all of us. So do what you think is the right thing to do.
Thank you, Commissioner Ernst. I appreciate that. Yes, and it does include all Mylar, any type of balloon. And the fact that the South Inlet Park is a county park and has those regulations in place, I think for streamlining and less confusion, it should be the right thing to do for all of our parks.
Totally agree with you.
And that will be coming up before city council, right?
Yes. It's being introduced on May 25th, and then the public hearing will be on June 8th, which just coincidentally happens to be World Ocean Day.
Perfect.
Mr. Rollins.
Rick, thank you for recognizing me.
I didn't see your hand up. I'm sorry.
That's all right. No, I totally agree with council and Maat, as well as Craig. And I was at the beach this weekend with beach cleanup, and I was going to comment on the fact that the beaches themselves, our church went over there Sunday morning to do some cleanup, and it was remarkable how clean the beach was, except for these little tiny parcels of plastic that turtles like to ingest, which are, you know, pretty harmful. I don't know, they were too small to identify where they came from, but I know anything we can do to protect the environment, as well as our friends at Gumbo Limbo, I'm all in favor of.
Great. Well, thank you. Yes, and the balloons also have the nylon string attached to them, which of course, as you know, can wrap around all the marine life that has been, can, you know, endanger them to.
It's a great move.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Melissa, do we have any other hands up? Okay.
Phone number pending, and 8004.
You're breaking up, Melissa.
Let's go to Raoul, Mr. Travieso. Go ahead, Mr. Travieso, please give your name, your address, and you'll have five minutes.
Sure. Thank you. I'm Raoul Travieso. I live at 1037 West Royal Palm Road. Commissioners, and it's important to add, commission staff, I represent the Boca Raton Pickleball Club, and I am also the USA Pickleball Ambassador for all of Southeast Florida, which includes the counties of Monroe and Martin. Commissioners, I try and stay informed regarding your recreational recommendations and proposals. I am keenly aware of today's agenda item regarding the pickleball tournament presentation. Although this was unexpected, as club president, this is a big deal to our club members and the local pickleball community. This tournament is good for our community, our tourism, and our recreational revenue. As an ambassador for the USA Pickleball, I'm in support, as this will be a totally sanctioned tournament. If this pickleball tournament is approved, our club members, with the help of other local clubs, will, we will be willing to support this tournament, because it will be good for the district, the city, and pickleball players. In closing, such a tournament will solidify the idea that this is the sport of the future, and more courts are needed. As always, we are here to provide recommendations and any assistance required, and I thank you for your attention regarding this matter.
Thank you, Raoul. I think Melissa will be the first to sign up if it's approved.
Mr. Galanis. You can please give your name, address, and you'll have five minutes, please, sir.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Hi, Greg.
Hi, guys. Greg Galanis, 1780 Parkside Circle South, Boca Raton, Florida. Monica, very welcome to, happy to hear you participate in the Beach and Parks Call today. Thanks for joining. After listening to several city council members at the most recent joint session lament that they would not support any golf components at Boca Tika property, I got very concerned and, as a result, got many phone calls, angry phone calls from golfers. Subsequent to that, last week, I hosted a call with the city manager, Lee Farnell, who also invited deputy city manager Michael Wika and director of Parks and Recreation, Michael Calvert, to join my call. The topic of the conversation was simple. Will the city support golf components on the Boca Tika property? In short, I was pleasantly surprised with their response. Mr. Arnold was emphatic about Beach and Parks being able to do what they thought was best. He also reminded me that they went so far as to modify the ILA to reflect the fact that Beach and Parks can do whatever recreation components that they wish on the Boca Tika property. He went on to mention that the city's biggest concern was the Beach and Parks commissioners were not even in unison on what to do on the property. There are at least two commissioners who are not in agreement on golf, and without Beach and Parks having some consensus on the property, it's going to be hard for the city to support it. In addition, they did not get the impression that Beach and Parks were interested in doing a joint master plan for recreation for the city. I conveyed to them that my biggest concern was not beginning to develop the golf component while waiting for a master plan to be developed. Beach and Parks are paying upwards of $2 million a year in debt service on the land. Three years have passed with nothing happening. Your constituents have spoken and stated that golf is the number one priority on the Boca Tika property, and this should not wait another two or three years for a master plan to be finalized. Certainly, both things can happen concurrently, a master plan being developed with a portion of the property being set aside to be developed for a nine-hole or an executive golf course and practice area, as we've been planning for, for nearly three years. I also encourage Beach and Parks to work with the city on the master plan concurrently. The city, the city has frequently works in serial, where they do one thing and don't wait, wait till it's completion before they start another, and I think that we deserve better than that right now. In addition, on Friday night, I spoke with the mayor. He, too, echoed the comments of the city manager, that Beach and Parks need to get on the same page and gain some consensus on their priorities, and assured me that the city would be supportive of an executive course and practice facility on the property. So my request to you guys tonight, and I want to be very clear, please find a way to move forward today on decision-making for golf on the property. Get some consensus, agree on what you do, and please decide to move forward. With the city acknowledging their support, there should be no reason for you guys to hold back. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Greg.
I don't see your hands right now. Oh, here we go. Phone number 3460. Phone number 3460, please state your name, your address, and you'll have five minutes, please.
Hi, everybody. It's Rick Hurd, 285 Northeast Spanish Court. And you might think that Greg and I planned a tag team here, but, so, I want to also urge the district to make some decisions today on the Ocean Breeze Boca Tika property. I'm not saying that it's going to be easy, and I'm not saying that you know every minute detail that you need to know, but I am saying that you know enough to establish a direction and a vision. And after all, what's your role beyond the obvious in your charter? I believe it's your responsibility to create amazing parks for those who live in Greater Boca Raton to enjoy, and you have a great record in doing that, but things have stalled for now, and we have to move forward. So how do you do it? Well, I think this is how. You need to create and agree on a vision for what a park on the Ocean Breeze Boca Tika property could look like. You don't need to know where everything will go right now. You don't need to know how big or how small each piece will be. You don't even need to know how much it will ultimately cost. You just need to dream a little bit and agree on a high-level vision, starting with which major components will be included. You don't need a high-priced consultant to tell you that. Your recent RFI responses have the answer. Your constituents want golf, pickleball, walking paths, bike paths, gardens and passive areas, a community center, indoor activities, playgrounds, and dog-friendly areas. Those are the pieces of the puzzle that the RFI produced. The property can accommodate all of that and more. A park planner or a consultant can design it, but you first have to tell them what you want. You have to be in harmonious and solid agreement on the puzzle pieces. Until you can reach agreement on those pieces, you will continue to be dismissed offhand by the city council. When you can speak in a singular voice about your vision and what needs to be included, you will get what we all want. I wish I had more time now to discuss these puzzle pieces. I would allay your concerns about golf, which is the most important piece and which generates the most concern. I'm anticipating being on the formal agenda for your next meeting in two weeks to get into more detail about these pieces, especially golf. But in the meantime, I'm going to try the Cliff Notes version of why not include golf? Number one, it's too expensive. Well, a relatively inexpensive nine-hole course can be built using the bones of the former South Course. This would be a Winter Park Nine type of approach that was promoted by city council, built inexpensively, and achieved nationwide acclaim. Number two, we don't need more golf. Actually, we do. We have no course to replace the lost Boca Municipal Executive Course and its 30,000 rounds of golf. Call these rounds, but they are actually people, probably 500 people, who play that golf course. Number three, it will compete with Boca Country Club. Well, the truth is, Boca Country Club has nothing to offer the executive golfer. These golfers already don't play Boca Municipal or other full-size courses for a reason. They will not play Boca Country Club. Number four, it will lose money. Well, actually, it could, should, would be at least a break even, which no other park component could do. As an example, every Palm Beach County golf course, and there are six, makes money. The Winter Park Nine makes money. Executive golf courses are the future. Number five, golf failed here before, so why should it succeed now? Well, Ocean Breeze did fail, but it failed because of financial mismanagement, not to the lack of golfers. The course was extremely busy, and there remains a high demand for golf in East Boca. Number six, I'm afraid to endorse golf because it's elitist. Well, your constituents have spoken. They have signed petitions, and they pleaded with you to include golf. Golf is not elitist, at least executive golf isn't. Golf is the greatest sport for kids to learn. It teaches values that are being lost in schools and society. It's the most valuable business activity our kids could learn for life. It keeps us active as we age, and it's for everyone, big, little, young, and old. Number seven, the city won't approve of golf. Well, yes, they will, but only if you commissioners are in solid agreement. And it isn't what you want as commissioners, it's what your constituents are telling you that they want. Hear them, and let's get going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. As always, thank you very much.
There are no more hands. No more hands raised.
Since we don't have any more hands raised, public requests are now closed. It's time to approve the minutes of the previous meeting of May 3rd, 2021. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Craig. Any discussion? Joanne, would you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogelstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Joanne. Our first item of business is a pickleball tournament presentation by Mr. Foster and Mr. Herman. Brienne, would you lead us off and introduce our guests?
Yes, Madam Chair. At our last meeting, we had an inquiry to host a pickleball tournament at Patch Reef. The board asked to hear more about that before they gave their approval to move forward with it. So tonight, we have Carl Foster and Ken Herman on the line. We also have Barbara from the City of Boca Raton Recreation Services. She's the manager of the Patch Reef Tennis Facility. So I will turn it over to Mr. Foster and Mr. Herman.
Mr. Foster, Mr. Herman, you can unmute your phones now.
Thank you. Ken Herman here.
Hey, Ken.
Welcome.
Thank you. Is Carl here?
Can you hear me now?
There you go, Carl.
Okay.
Hi, Mr. Foster.
Hello. Hello, Commissioners. Thank you very much for our time. Ken is traveling. I just got back from Cincinnati. We had an APP Tour event up there in the heartland of the state, Middletown, and Ken's on his way back to Chicago, so he's pulled over with a big truck full of pickleball equipment and enjoying himself from there. I am, I'm back in Florida, where it's a little bit warmer than it was up there, but it was a very good tournament, so we appreciate your time, and we're excited about the opportunity, and I'm anxious to get back out on the Patch Reef Pickleball Courts tomorrow after about 10 days of colder weather, so I'm looking forward to that. But we, I'll open up a little bit, then let Ken speak, and then Barbara, I think, is going to address a little bit what we discussed in regards to the tennis facility. And the presentation you have, we did a cover letter there on page nine of your presentations with a brief overview of what we're proposing for the APP Masters Boca Raton Event in January of 2022, and utilizing the existing pickleball courts, as well as repainting several courts, the stadium court, and then, and then using nine of the other tennis courts to give us a total of 43 pickleball courts, which would generate about 2,000 amateur and professional players. This is the, this is the diamond of the APP Tour event, which would be, put Boca Raton in the, the highlight worldwide of the major event that a lot of the pros and amateurs play in one of 16 events throughout the city, like the one we just were in Cincinnati, the one we held in Delray Beach, which some of you may have attended or you heard about, we discussed before. My company, Foster Events Group, is partners with Ken Herman and the APP Tour. I've had my company here since 1983 and been a Boca resident, as well as my, my team and staff members that are pickleball players and business owners in Boca. And we all do play at Patch Reef Park in Boca as well, and we're excited about what Raoul has done with the Boca Raton Pickleball Club, and working with him to help us with volunteers and bringing the community together. In a six-day event is what we're proposing, which would include a wheelchair division, adding juniors, and we did four days in Delray, so we're, we would expand it, two extra days to bring more community members and amateurs and pickleball players from around the whole county, as well as Boca, obviously, to be able to participate, to come and view and be spectators. We're enthused by the pandemic easing down, the vaccinations and events now up to 40% to 50% spectators. We were just over at the US Open Pickleball in Naples, where they just released and unveiled the mask, and there was, they had 13,000 people over there in Naples just a few weeks ago. So we're excited by January of next year that we'll all be healthy and recovered and mask-free and vaccinated and be able to put on a very exciting event at Patch Reef Park if we can get the go-ahead, and timing is, timing is of the essence, because we're announcing the June 2022 schedule. Ken is, and June 15th. The APP Tour is USA Pickleball, the only pro tour that's sanctioned by USA Pickleball, which is like the governing body of tennis, the USTA, that Raoul is an ambassador of and has been part of for many years, growing the sport of pickleball. So there is an agreement that we, our attorneys put together for rental of the facility, and also to include a percentage of gate receipts, as well as the rental fees, and to cover any overtime costs and any other expenses to put that event on, that we would be able to discuss and understand that the contract, I believe, needs to be with the city, but in consideration and coordination with the Beach and Parks. So with that said, I'd like, like Ken just gave you an overview and his vision, he's the visionary that started the tour last year, and the events this year and the 22 events scheduled for next year, including Boca, and Delray is still scheduled for March of next year. And then there's another event in South Florida, which is up in Port St. Lucie at the PGA Verano, the World Pickleball Open, that runs in December. So we have a big, big influx of pickleball players, obviously, in Florida and South Florida as well. So Ken, are you on? You want to go ahead and chime in a little bit, then we'll take questions?
Well, first off, everyone, thank you for your time. My name is Ken Herman. I'm the creative founder and CEO of the APP Tour. The APP stands for the Association of Pickleball Professionals. I am en route right now, pulled over on the side gas station between Indianapolis and Chicago, so I appreciate the couple of minutes we've got for your time here. I did live in Boca for about eight or nine years. I was married in Boca, and my, and my daughter was born at the hospital there, so have fond memories. We just had an amazing gathering with just so many enthusiastic players there in South Florida when we did our Delray Beach event, that when we were looking to put a place for our season-ending tournament, I certainly have played tennis many times over at Patch Reef, and that conversation came up, and now we're to the point now, we're just asking your consideration for us letting our year-end season championships be at, at the facility at Patch Reef. We're trying to be very respectful of all the other tournaments that are in the South Florida area. It would be rather rude to come in and put this tournament on an already previously established tournament. There are a couple of, there are a couple of big tournaments, the first two weekends in December, and we just felt doing something in the latter weeks of December would probably not be the best with all the holiday season going on, and looked at doing, you know, the proposed date of January 19th with the start date, the third week in January when all the holidays are over, and we can kind of start things up. But this would be our season-ending event for 2021, and we're excited about the possibilities of this. There certainly is a tremendous amount of volunteers that have expressed interest in just continuing to learn how to play the game, and it would be my hope that after we run a successful event there, along with the event in Delray Beach, that there would just be a continued interest amongst players getting involved in the sport and learning how to play that will just continue to enhance your local programs that you've got there. But I appreciate the consideration, and I'm open to answering any questions I can answer for you all.
Before we go to the Commissioners, gentlemen, I'd like for Brienne to weigh in. She has some comments to make about how the city is going to be involved in this.
I just wanted to comment that typically in the past, and I did send out an email, typically in the past, the city has contracted with any tournaments at the parks, so the agreement was put in this agenda packet just so the board, it was requested by Commissioners to put that in there so they could see what the agreements have looked like at other facilities. And then we also have, if there's questions about the Patch Reef facility and the impacts on it, Barbara's on the phone to answer those questions.
Okay, so we'll open up the conversation. Anybody have their hand up? Mr. Engel?
Yeah. Excuse me. First of all, I want to thank you, gentlemen, for coming to our meeting tonight. I think pickleball is gonna, if it hasn't, if it's taken off already, I think it's going to take off even more. But I do have some questions for Barbara. First, do we have enough parking available, both at Patch Reef and surrounding areas, to accommodate a, an event like this? Barbara?
Yes, hi. Well, I know that Patch Reef Park is pretty big, and we do have parking here. We may have to have some people bust in. I'm not sure about that, so I'd have to get back with you on that.
Okay. Also, what would be the impact on, on the tennis courts? Specifically, how long would it be, would it take to prepare for such a tournament? And how long after the tournament is over will it take until the tennis courts are available to players again?
Well, I believe that Herman, he can answer how long it takes to get the lines put up and the nets put up. I know that as far as the tennis, anything with the advance notice, the league will schedule all team matches away, so we don't have to worry about that. Players will be able to reserve courts at either Boca Raton Tennis Center or Swim and Rocket Center, so that opens up some courts there, and we still have six courts for the players to use.
And also, Barbara, Commissioners, we, there's on page 11, there's a breakdown of the tennis courts and how long that it would be transferred. When we taped the tennis, the tennis courts into pickleball courts, that's a pretty simple process. That's the day before, so we don't take those out of commission. As soon as the tournament ends on Sunday, those tennis courts are put right back, pickleball courts are made right back into tennis. The ones that do take a couple extra days would be the ones that we would repaint with a professional service or that already does your tennis courts, same, same company that we work with at Delray and other facilities, where they would repaint the stadium court to a pickleball court. And that would be much like the US Open Pickleball, where we'd have on-court seating, VIP seating, and it'd be and it'd be first-class stadium court for television, as well as live streaming, as well as CBS. And then the other courts that we would use to repaint, we're only going to be using, there'd be six, as Barbara mentioned, six courts that we won't be touching at all. They'd be used for tennis the whole tournament. They wouldn't be used, just during the tournament week, two days before, that weekend before, we would take two to three days to resurface those courts and have them ready for the tournament. And then, and then two days, when the tournament ends on Sunday, within two to three days, depending on weather, if it's snow, rain, and everything goes as scheduled, within a couple of days, they're right back to the tennis court facility. And I think that's broken down on page 11 there. And we've done this at several events. We did it at Delray and I think Melissa, maybe somebody's talked to Jeff Bingo, the general manager that handles that facility, he helped us oversee that. And as Barbara is probably aware, on resurfacing tennis courts and pickleball courts, and you went through that when you put your six courts in there, I knew Raul and Melissa, I think, were involved with that, with Barbara. So maybe somebody else can chime. I think that's pretty self-conscious process before and after the tournament where you're going to be. Tennis will still be ongoing.
So I can, this is Ken Herman again. I can chime in, I can add a little bit to what Carl's saying. Carl used the word "resurface." Resurface and repainting are two different definitions there. When you go and actually resurface a court, you're breaking down the court and adding layers onto the court. We certainly do not need to resurface the court. All we are doing is just simply repainting the court. So the court itself, the courts in Patch Reef are in terrific shape. We're just putting a film of paint over the court, similar to what the court is painted to right now, so that we're not crossing paints. We did that with Delray Beach and then we would just come back. So it's a lot quicker process to repaint than it is to do a complete resurfacing. And to address the parking conversation that Linda had discussed about, you know, if we do hit a mark of, I mean, 2,000 would be a complete maximum number and that's spread out over six days. We honestly felt that we would have anywhere between 300 to 350 people per day with players and additional volunteers or what have you. And we felt, you know, right off the very get-go, parking was a major one-line item. And with the availability of parking that Patch Reef offers right now, we didn't feel as if that would be an issue. Certainly if we came within those realms of those numbers, spraying it out over six days. It's not as if 2,000 people are all going to be there at one day at one time.
We also have parking reciprocal with St. Mark's Church right next door to the west of the park, so that would probably be available. Brianna, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. My concern was that we would have adequate parking specifically on the last day of the event. Usually it builds up to a crescendo. But if everybody is satisfied that parking won't be an issue, then I'm satisfied that parking won't be an issue. And as far as the other things we're concerned, my only questions were the impact upon tennis players. And if that is at a minimum, then we should be okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Ernst, you had your hand up.
Sure, I guess, you know, I'm supportive of it because, look, the risk here is with the team putting on the event. They are, this is a big, big production, a big, you know, effort, repainting and courting. And so I say let's support them. It's the first time they're doing it. If it goes off well, it's, you know, good for Boca, it's good for the economic activity of the area. And let's not get in their way, but the only thing I would ask is, let's be sure you put it all back the way you found it. You know, we love our parks and we'd like to make sure that, you know, Patch Reef is put back. And in the long run, if you prove that this tournament is a viable thing and it could be something that would really work in the future, we'll work together to make sure you always do it in Boca and it's done right in a good style. And one thing I would ask you to consider is much like what ESPN does for the Boca Bowl, they always partner with a nonprofit somewhere. And in Boca, we do love our nonprofits, from the Tri-County Humane Society to any number of them. I just ask, consider, you know, getting a nonprofit involved with your program that seems to be a successful program for any event. So that would be my thought, but good luck to you and we don't want to, I don't want to stop you from doing it. I wish you the very best on this thing. I hope it works out terrific and it's for many years.
Thank you, Mr. Ernst. Commissioner Rollins?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I echo the same sentiments that everyone has voiced already. I would suggest that you have a parking backup because while there's a good amount of parking there, I think that you could run into some issues there, especially maybe having the volunteers carpool in so you don't have take-up spaces that might be used for your patrons. The St. Mark's School next door is available, but remember during the week, I don't know whether the school is in session or not, because they do have services over there, I think a school as well, that could be a conflict for us in that event that we have overlapping times. The question I have for the lady from Patch Reef Tennis is, will the members that play at Patch Reef that are non-residents of the city have to pay non-resident fees if they move to Memorial?
I have to find out about that, but usually if they're members of our center, it's reciprocal. If they're not members, then they would still pay the non-resident fee. So that's where we go with that.
Yeah, at Patch Reef, as you know, you can be a resident of Palm Beach County and pay the resident fee at Patch Reef. I want to see, hopefully you can provide the same courtesy since we're making this facility available to the pickleball tournament, which I think is be beneficial to the tournament. But I don't want the tennis members who may be using it having to pay additional if they have to play at Memorial.
Well, yeah, if they're members of the center, I know definitely they don't have to pay anything extra.
Okay, well, I'm sure you have non-members that may play, just that live in the county, so just keep that in mind. And I'd like to know the answer to that. The other issue too is the economics. I saw a lot of data that's in the packet and I'd like to know, once, there's a lot of moving parts that, and I wouldn't expect an answer today, but I sure would like to know what the, how the bottom line usually runs at a tournament. Maybe either Carl or Ken can answer that question. Is that something that generates a profit for the facility that hosts this tournament?
Yeah, absolutely, Commissioner. The economic impact you saw was done by Palm Beach Sports Commission, who's a partner, and they're very excited about us coming to Boca and finalizing it. They would support it and help us with some grants and also work with the hotels. They were very instrumental helping us with hotels in Delray Beach. Our goal in Boca would use, we'd want to use Boca hotels and not, you know, use hotels outside of Boca. And we would stay in the city of Boca to bring the economic impact to the city, as well as the restaurants and so forth in that area. And because of spectators, we don't know that number and how COVID is going to be, but we can anticipate that we'll probably draw more people than we did at Delray because we were very restricted there. And I think it was for the growth of pickleball and the growth of people getting back out and going to events. By January, we can expect a nice increase there. That would also benefit the revenues for the city and the parks coming in, as well as the local economic impact. And Palm Beach Sports Commission will be a partner of ours and they will do the feasibility and economic study that we'll be able to share with everybody, like we included in the package at Twente Gorda. We had a good feedback there, as well as Delray Beach, and that was a first-time event in Delray. So and the Commissioner Ernst, yeah, we would like this to be, us living here, we would like this to be a permanent home and make it successful. And we will definitely put Patch Reef back bigger than, better than ever when we're done because we got to play there ourselves. So you better believe everything would be put back just in the right place. And we want to do a first-class event than any of our other events that Ken Herman puts on. He does everything first-class and we make sure that we're all Boca, South Florida people. So having this in our backyard and our home, we're excited about that. And so we appreciate your input and your support and there'll be a lot of great teamwork working together and we want to make sure the tennis players, I'm a tennis player also, so make sure our tennis players are just as happy. A lot of them are coming into pickleball by the day, so there'll be a good chance for them to experience that as well. So and the parking, we'll address the parking. We did that with Delray as far as in regards to the impact on the parking, if we have to use outside facilities to bus people in. But as Ken mentioned, the weekends get busier with spectators during the week, where the divisions are played each and every day. Different people come in each and every day, so it's not like it's an influx of that many people each day. The weekends will get busier and we'll be able to get a planning study and a parking study on what, you know, the areas, and we'll do some walkthroughs there, you know, with Barbara and staff, the parks and racket. Look at the facilities at Patch Reef, as well as the surrounding areas. That's a good idea. If there's some of the churches in the area that might not be, might have some parking lots available during the week, you know, versus the weekends. I know I used to do some work over there, First Baptist, I think was just sold to Spanish River. So, yeah, we're very aware of that and we want to make it as smooth and comfortable as possible for everybody. So, take any other questions? If there's any other questions, we'd be glad to answer.
I have one quick question for Barbara. Youth sports and other activities in the community, are they not going to be scheduled at this time as far as the rest of the park?
Well, there's not camp at that time. Camp would be earlier in the year. They, we could still probably have some courts available.
No, I'm talking about the rectangles, the baseball fields, the rest of the park.
That I'd have to find out from.
Would you confirm that with Mr. Calvert?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Aaron, I think you had your hand up and then I'll get to you, Bob.
Yeah, I was just going to mention the same thing about football and lacrosse because that's like times when they play, I think, a lot of times. So that would be a good thing to check, make sure they have no tournaments or anything like that. And then I don't know if anybody mentioned it, but Boca Country Club might be up and running with their tennis courts by this time. So there might be some more available courts over there for tennis players by January of 2022, right? So that would be a place for tennis players to go, at least during this week too. So, but I, all for it. I think it's a good thing.
Mr. Rollins?
Well, Aaron covered my question, Bob, while I was listening to both yours and her questions. I just wanted to mention that I do think, since there's only one entrance and exit to that property, I'd hope that you consider having some, someone regulate the parking, whether it's PD, Boca PD, or someone else. And then get your food trucks set up early because I know there are some stringent regulations for food trucks in the parks.
Yeah, we would, yeah, we have, we did that with Delray, while certificate of insurance with everybody, that the vendors have to supply that. And also back to the charity, we had the charity at Delray was the first responders, so we did a big charity event with the police, the fire, and the veterans. And thank you first responders, did a pro celebrity and raised $15,000 for the charity. So we're open to working with several charities. We have a youth foundation, a pickleball youth fund that the APP Tour donates to at every event as well, and works with local middle schools and high schools to get more younger juniors playing pickleball. And we have companies that donate paddles and stuff to the schools and we pick one or two schools and they come out at the event and are part of the festivities. So that's one thing that we're very looking forward to raising up the next generation of our youth pickleball players by having a youth division like they had at the US Open this year. There's a lot of eight to 15-year-olds now really getting more active in pickleball, as well as the older age divisions. So we're very excited about that. And we haven't designated any specific charities, but those are some of the things we've done in the past. And living and working in this area too, there's a lot of great causes that we can, we call it Pickleball with a Purpose. And that's how we promote it on our TV shows and so forth.
Aaron?
I was going to say, you have an in with the first responders there with Mr. Chavieso, so.
Yeah, I'm a veteran myself, so, yeah, we're, yeah, we're all for that. So I think that's probably one of our charities.
Since we do not need a motion on this because the city is the one organizing this, I think we have a consensus. I think we're all on board with this, aren't we, commissioners? Yes? Okay, good. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for a wonderful presentation and we look forward to your pickleball tournament in January.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All righty. Our second item of business is the Ocean Strand update. Brianna, would you like to bring us up to date on this, please?
Sure. Commissioners, on page 40 in your agenda packets is the memo, which I'm sure all of you have read and everybody's had a chance to look over, the archaeological report that was done at Ocean Strand. Basically where we're at is that this, there were findings on the property, so it's changed how we're going to be able to develop it. So tonight, we're looking to do three change orders, which are all credits. It's totaling about 278,890 between the three change orders. What this does is changes the site plan so that we're no longer removing the invasives to the degree that we thought we were going to be able to on the property. The reason for that is that the restrictions now placed on us by this report would require those things to be removed by hand. And for a pedestrian park, it doesn't seem like the best use of taxpayer dollars at this point to go forward with that. There are opportunities to explore this archaeological assessment further. There's two additional phases that we could do that would range in price, which I included some of those details in this memo, but it could get up to costing $1 million to continue that study, take three to five years to complete. So for the sake of tonight, we're looking to amend the site plan so that we're not removing those invasives. We're going to submit the revised plans to the city and also submit the archaeological report, as well as the survey that the city wanted us to do. If they are agreeable to moving forward, if there's no more questions or concerns, we will get some prices for just clearing out the central hammock by hand to make it safe enough so that we can put down the molds trails. And then we'll see what that will impact the project by. That will be another change order forthcoming after this one. So I also, I have another update on Ocean Strand. I just, I could talk about that now or we could talk about the change orders first.
Let's have a motion for each of the change orders. We'll go through change order number seven. I would need a motion to approve.
A move.
Do I, do you have a second? You're muted, Mr. Engel. Okay. Is there any discussion about change order number seven? Hearing none. Joanne, would you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogelstein?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Change order number eight, please.
A move.
Thank you. A second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ernst. Any discussion? Joanne, a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogelstein?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Okay. And change order number nine, a motion, please.
A move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Where's the second? Thank you, Mr. Ernst. Any discussion? Joanne, a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogelstein?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Executive Director Harms, would you continue with the Ocean Strand discussion, please?
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners, for the approvals on those change orders. On page, I guess it's 48, there is a site plan of Ocean Strand. The district was approached a few weeks ago by a family who recently lost a family member, unexpected, well, untimely, I should say. They are interested, they'd like to remain anonymous for the sake of tonight's meeting. They are interested in contributing a significant, making a significant financial contribution towards Ocean Strand. And in exchange for that contribution, they're looking to add a couple of benches by the water and a plaque that will honor their late family member. So before we move forward with any of that, I wanted to talk to the boards about it tonight publicly and get, I guess, an approval to move forward with, working with them. They're amenable to any background checks that we want to pursue and working on a contract with them. The portion of the project that they would like to fund is towards this western portion, the clearing, the placement of the benches, the clearing out, the ground covering, and anything that needs to be done in that section. They're not looking for naming rights, it's simply a section of the park that would be dedicated to their. They're not looking for naming rights, it's simply a a section of the park that would be dedicated to their um a spot so that they could go and and have a place to remember their loved one.
Commissioners, let's open up the discussion. I don't see any hands. Oh, Mr. Ernst.
Um I, you know, Brienne shared with us the story and what's happened with it, and I think long as we follow our protocol, what we discussed on past memorials and things like that, it it's um nice to support it. Um we're not giving up the naming rights to the park or anything like that. This is a pure donation and in exchange for helping a a nice memorial area for that person. So um long run, we do have to have some more, I guess, just, you know, mindful of of who we put plaques up names for, a process around it, that's all. I think it would be a good thing to do, so, but I'm supportive of it.
Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I I concur with Craig, you know, and uh I also agree that, you know, at some point in the future, you know, a policy uh should probably be implemented. But uh I I know that the city has benches over on the uh Red Reef area with uh plaques on the the benches in memory of uh an individual. And uh I I think for the contribution uh that this family might make, I think it, and we're gonna need benches there as well. So I think it'd be a a nice uh nice effort on our part to honor, help this family honor their uh son who passed away and and in the process, have a nice little place to uh sit and reflect.
Mr. Engel?
Uh I think as long as we have all our ducks in a row, uh this would be, this is a great idea. Uh and it goes back uh to Commissioner Ernst's um thoughts about community involvement. This is a way for the community to get involved, and I think it's a great idea to have a place where people can sit and reflect and uh.
Either enjoy the beauty of the park or remember a loved one.
Mr. Horowitz, do we need a um a motion for this?
If the direction is to Brienne to go back and speak with the family and we can work on an MOU, there would not be, if there was consensus for that action, she could take that consensus and move forward. And we'd be happy to work with Brienne on an appropriate document to bring to the board at the appropriate time.
Commissioners, are are we all in agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Wright, did you want to weigh in?
No, I I mean, I think it's a, it's a uh great for them to be donating money to the park. And I know um Brienne said that they live nearby, so they'll be able to walk there and sit and, you know, um have a nice place for their loved one. And I think it's a, it's a, it's a fine idea, so I'm for it.
Okay, Brienne.
And I'm excited to get the park open finally.
Yes. So we can uh not only work up with this family, but um you you will also direct Nate and Carol to go forward with everything. Okay.
Yes.
Sounds good. Do we have any kind of a timeline for Ocean Strand?
Once, now that this, now that you all are good with changing the site plan and and approving these change orders tonight, we'll resubmit to the city. Um it will be, it will be then on their hands to run it through their system again.
Mr. Ernst, you're on mute.
Uh yes, Madam Chair. One thought, though, just for the group and for Brienne, is is it possible, I know the, you know, I know the mitten thing looks like an obstacle, but I guess I look at it more as an opportunity. It creates another special component of the whole park that will preserve it. Um I'm concerned about the invasives, and is it possible maybe to create on our website a um, you know, divide the park up in quadrants or smaller sections so that we can, when volunteers come or interested in doing things, that we can direct them to a specific area for, we need to remove the invasives. This is what invasive looks like, it's gotta be done by hand. I think the community will really come together and and help do this, just like they built Sugar Sand Park, just like other things that have been built. But we need to kind of put a call out for volunteers, but kind of get it in an organized fashion, because it is dangerous too. So we have to kind of um.
We can, we can work with the, we can work with the biologists that Maricor is working with and see if we can't get a plan for um how we would advise the public to do it, and then we could work on that for a volunteer program in the future.
Okay.
Good idea.
That's even an ongoing thing with the invasives, because that's going to be a problem.
I see it as really that, the ongoing thing. That that's the ongoing thing of how to keep this park from, you know, not, we want that jungle look, but not the jungle feel, so.
Okay.
Okay. All righty, item number three, the Ocean Breeze RFQ and the Master Plan Services, Brienne?
Um commissioners, on page forty-nine is the RFQ that was directed from our last meeting to put out for um the Ocean Breeze property. What this enables us to do, I think there was, there was some discussion that we, this is, this is a long process. This is, the RFQ process is the process that's worked um for all those iconic parks in Boca, Sugar Sand Park, Patch Reef Park. Um what this does is this gives us a firm to work with, they will design the park. Um we've, we've talked about them working through the RFIs in here, um working with the city, working within the parameters of our interlocal agreement. Um so all those things would be, would be assigned to this firm. They would help us organize the property and and what needs to be put out there and exercise in all the financials. I did talk to NGF about um whether or not a golf course is fiscally sound. They've, they've offered to do a feasibility study, but I do think it's something that our consultants, whoever's hired as the architect design of this park could, could also um put together for us on any elements you wanted to put into the park. So.
Thank you.
It starts on page forty-nine, I'm I'm here to answer any questions, open to suggestions. The thought process was to put this out, advertise it for thirty days. Um if we could get those responses back by the end of June, um depending on how many there were, you guys could evaluate and rank at the first meeting in July and um or the second meeting, depending on how many there were, and then we could start the process of of ranking and interviewing and then going through that and getting somebody on board as quickly as possible.
Um we've had some requests from the public about whether we're all on board to do the executive course, and I would like to satisfy the public uh one way or another. Um because this is what they are asking for and will become, if we are all on board, this will be part of this um response eventually. So um commissioners, let me hear what you're feeling about the executive course before we go forward with the RFQ. Mr. Rollins?
Uh Madam Chairman, I'm just wondering if we uh in in looking at a golf course, uh it it could be a revenue-producing uh item for the park. I'm I'm just wondering uh if it might be an idea that we could get around, but you know, there's a lot of unknowns with this as far as the development cost. Um as as far as the the location, there's been some discussion about it being on the east side or the west side. I I personally know how I feel about it, uh because I I think that having talked to other golf professionals, uh you know, short course uh is desirable, and it would not be in competition with the Boca Town Country Club. And it's not like the Red Reef Golf Course, uh what, while it's, it's for a particular segment of the market, I don't think that you're gonna get thirty thousand rounds over there at that location, whereas you could possibly get that same over at um at the Ocean Breeze course. Uh I I mean, I'm not uh saying that I'm for or against it, except the fact that the public has weighed in and said they really think we should have one over there. But I I'm just wondering if we have enough information. Um and and maybe this could just be one of those visioning things that we spoke to Rick about. But I'd like to have um some idea of the cost, which the NGF would uh be able to come in on. But at this point, I I still favor considering that uh as as an option over there. Whether or not we can pull that off would remain to be seen, but I think as as an option. And talking with a recent golf professional who has a par sixty-two on fifty-five acres, um ten pars, uh ten par threes and eight par fours, having played that course, you get that done in in a couple of hours very easily. That's what the uh the younger uh crowd wants to do. They don't want to spend four and a half, five hours on a golf course. Uh someone proposed putting, you know, new additional short tees on Boca Country Club, which I think would really be devastating to the recreational golfer who wants to get the job in a four hours, because if you encourage that type of play out there for the beginner, you're really gonna slow the play down. With all that being said, uh I would like to see us consider this as one of our visioning items on this this uh property. And I'd, and I'd hope that we could get a consensus on, at least, uh given that uh idea an opportunity to be developed.
Thank you. Mr. Engel?
Why not?
You're on mute.
That's why I said why. Um. Here are all of your questions.
You're you're not coming through, Steve.
I'm sorry? I think Bob and Susan need to mute when one's on stage.
I'll mute.
Steve is frozen. He's not.
He's frozen.
Your, your, your computer is not connected right now, you're frozen.
Uh, that's my connection.
Craig?
I'm sure. You know, and let me, I mean, maybe I was at the different, a different joint city meeting than than Mr. Galanis and others, because I did not hear unanimous support from city elected for a golf course to compete with their golf course. And, you know, I think it's just a little bit early to say we need to build another golf course. I was a hundred and ten percent behind the Price Fazio design, um let's build it out, do it right. And honestly, we got the rug pulled out from underneath us, and then we later found out that the country club was a donation. Um I get it, you know, that some of the golfers don't like the country club's resort, but we haven't given the city a chance to grow into it, to manage it, and to do something different. It is not Boca Uni, it is not, I, we all know that. Uh but what I heard at the city council meeting was is that the city is satisfied that golf is met. Um I am fully supportive of some level of golf component at Ocean Breeze, but I do not take the RFI, which was not the purpose to have a a a one-page or email in from every resident at Boca Tika and golf club members to come in as an, a unanimous goal to go build another golf course that competes with the the city's golf course. So no, I do not support an executive golf course there. I do support some level of golf. I think we heard many other people come in and say, do something great with this property. You have two hundred and twelve acres, do something that is unique and great. And I think we're gonna miss an opportunity to do that. And so the purpose of the RF, the initial RFI was really to get those ideas, all the ideas, and there were some good ideas that came through on that. And I think the one that unanimously came off the top was pickleball, uh some kind of premier pickleball center in some way or form. Uh some form of tennis, because we do understand there's gonna be challenges if the city do, does chose, choose to go down to to change their downtown complex. We don't know yet, and that's a long ways off. And by the way, I think we also heard um about, you know, Countess de Horni Phase Two, and I see it's in the 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 agenda list of things. Um I I want to remind everyone that we don't have the financial budget here to just go build whatever the hell we want to build and be able to do it in a timely fashion. Our revenue was cut, um we went, you know, lower last year for this year's tax base. We're basically, you know, pulled in about nineteen million, but we have to pay for the operating expenses of the city, and we do not have, uh we can't overcommit ourselves on what we're doing here. So my idea or thought was, and I agreed with the master plan design, is okay, let's go out to some kind of proposal to pull these components together, okay? But i- it isn't to design around an executive golf course and a driving range. It was to, let's be flexible and see what some of the ideas are. We're not giving them specific direction on that. And so Brienne and I went a little bit back and forth on what does that, what are we gonna get when we go up for the request for qualifications? And so I'm very pleased, she she did a lot of good work on redefining the scope and outlining it. So it's something I'm not sure what we're gonna get back, but the intent there was to get um a common document that we could go back and prioritize with this, you know, planner and see where things fit. And then can we get on a unanimous front, you know, page where we all agree? And and then we can, we're in that, what we talked about at the joint meeting, but it's coming back together in August, where we have a plan. Okay, and I think part of that plan is where does different things fit on this whole thing? And so um I don't know. I'm I'm supportive of some component of golf. I personally would rather see something more creative in the golf world where it's going. I mean, so you look at, you know, Tiger Woods saying that he's proposing in Delray, you look at that smaller, you know, what was proposed to us in the um the uh cradle that was described. I I kinda like that short course area and define the way it is, if if it makes sense. Um but I don't want to lose sight of the fact that, you know, we need to be supportive of our, you know, our city in what's going on at Boca, at the country club. They are going to develop, but they're gonna work their way into some things, it's gonna evolve. And I think collectively what we said that we were gonna do is is, there was a conversation, should pickleball go there or should it go over here? I think the consensus was, you know, we have raw space over here, it'll probably be easier to fit and a bigger area to fit in a portion. I'm not exactly sure if that's on the east side, the west side, where that fits. I suspect it's on the east side. But at the end of the day, let's go forward with, you know, getting the ideas, getting a planner out there, and we can talk through the prioritizing, prioritizing these things. But if the goal here is to talk, Susie, about building a new executive course or an eighteen-hole course or a driving range to recreate what we did, no, I am not supportive of that, and I think that would be a tragedy of the two hundred and twelve acres. I've heard Greg, I I know Greg, he's talked to me, I'm supportive of some component of golf. I don't know what that is yet and how it fits. Um but it is not what their vision was of going in with the Price Fazio thing, and it certainly is not without city support. So I'm looking for us to come together with a plan that the city can support, the city can help fund. Um and otherwise, it's gonna take a very long time for us to do something.
Thank you. Erin? Erin, you're on mute.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um yes, I am, we must have been at the same meeting, Craig, because I didn't hear um much support from city council either. Um I'm much more so on Craig's wavelength with this, unlike lots of other things. But um this, I am pretty much on the same page. I am not opposed to any, you know, some component of golf. I I think being creative is something that we definitely need to do, especially since Delray is um thinking about doing um that um the Tiger Woods thing out there. I think that doing something different is gonna be something that is going to be something that's interesting for the people of our community, and that's who we're doing it for. Um and so I think going out for this RFQ, um we'll find a great master planner who could come in with some really great ideas on some major components that we give to them and say, these are the things we're kind of looking at, what kind of plan can you develop for us? And they can give us some options too, I think. So um that's where I kind of am. I didn't think we would be saying, yes, we want, definitely want an executive course there or not tonight. I didn't think that was something that we were doing in regards to the RFQ. I didn't think that was necessary. Um but I am, I'm definitely on the same wavelength as Craig on that, so um that's where I'm at. And I and I don't think that, in terms of like a vote, I don't think that we all have to be on the same page all the time. I don't think being, us being told that we need to do that, we're elected officials, we're elected by our residents to to have our opinions on things that we think are best for the residents. So being told that we have to vote a sa- the same way as the rest of the commissioners to have a consensus is not something that I think is appropriate. I think we all have our individual feelings and votes on things, and we need to stay true to those. So um that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh Steve?
Here's my concern. Uh we designed a a an eighteen-hole golf course with a practice facility and a short course, and uh it came to, when we stripped everything down, came to fourteen million dollars. Uh if we do something like this, what is this gonna cost us? What is an executive range? What is an executive range, an executive course with a practice facility on the east side going to cost us? The city has, from what I hear, said to us, go ahead, build a golf course, just don't ask us for anything. And when I, when they say anything, I'm assuming they're saying, don't ask us for any money. Probably also, don't ask us for any additional right-of-ways, don't ask us for any extensions onto additional property. So, we have to bear this in mind. Without having information as to what this is going to cost us, I can't come to a decision tonight as to whether this is the best use of the east side of the property or what exactly is the best use of the west side of the property. I think the RFQ is a great way to go. This gives us an understanding of direction and cost. The last thing I want to do is have somebody come back to us and say, well, all right, this thing's going to cost you $8 million. That's the base, and if you want any bells and whistles, it's going to cost more. Because quite frankly, in a single fiscal year, we can't afford $8 million. In two fiscal years, it's questionable as to whether we can afford a total of $8 million. So, that's where I am right now.
Thank you. The reason I wanted to get this out in the open is because we really haven't had a chance to air our feelings and have everybody, let the public know where we stand. And I think it's important. I'm not saying that we all have to be on the same page either, but if the public knows where you stand and you're true to yourself, I'm all for it. You have to do what you feel is the best. The RFQ is going to give us some people who will come in, and we can give them some direction. We have to start thinking about the direction we want to give them. So, Mr. Rollins, did you have your hand up again?
I did, but finish your thought.
No, I'm fine. I'm good.
You know, Erin, you put the right spin on it. We really don't have to all agree on something, and while it's nice that we can come to a consensus, we've had plenty of votes where we did not. And I would just like to make another comment about the golfing aspect of it. I sat and talked with a person who developed and manages a par 62 course. As I said, they shoehorned it into 55 acres, different configuration of property than what we have, and it may be a little more difficult if we were to consider it. But I asked a specific question, would this be in competition with the Boca Tica Country Club? And his answer was emphatically no. And he said, the people that are playing this course are the beginners and the seniors and folks in between who are just looking for a quick golf fix, since it takes so little time to play. I'm certainly interested in developing this concept as to whether or not it makes the final cut or not. I don't know, but I think it deserves, it deserves consideration, given the fact that our informal RFI did indicate this was a priority for a lot of folks. There's a number of priorities that we have out there, and Aaron's walking trails, you know, pickleball may be an option out there, but I wouldn't rule out any of those things until we started trying to put those components together and seeing how they lay out on this park. I mean, the complication that's going to be with the east course is, you know, Clintmore may go through, and that's a very practical reality that we're looking at based on conversations I've heard from the workshop. So, let's not tie our hands with any particular item that goes on there, but let's give the person that we obtained a free rein to take a look at what the public wants. And we'll have some, hopefully, some public input once we get back to our regular place of business over at Swimming Racket. But the Wall Street Journal, Craig, I know you're a reader of that, and you probably saw the article regarding these smaller courses. They're very popular, and they're doing very well. And I think while we had a pandemic and everybody was looking to get outside, I think people have looked at the experience of golf on a mini scale and have enjoyed getting out there and playing, you know, and recreating for two hours and not spending, you know, five hours playing around the golf. So, I don't know that we have to have a consensus, as Erin said, but we had to have a checklist, have a vision of what we might want to have out there. And I think that a vision might include pickleball, it might include the golf, certainly trails, certainly tennis, maybe an indoor tennis facility. And the thing, the reality of all of these things are, is that they're not going to happen overnight, but we do need to have a place set for these features because capital costs and operational costs are going to have to come into play in our budget. And it's, as Michael Calvert said with his, you know, his recreational master plan, you know, let's get a plan for the next 25, 30 years. And, you know, that's another topic for discussion.
Erin?
Yeah, I'm curious, what is a 62-par course that you're talking about, like a superfund class course? That's like, I don't, I don't know what it is. I've never heard of it.
Well, it's, I know the National Golf Foundation has heard of it. They have a different name for it, Erin, but it's a regulation golf course, except that instead of having a par five, they're all 10 par threes. It's a little bit of, a little bit of target golf because the greens are not what you might find at, say, Quail Ridge or at Osprey. They're smaller greens to accommodate the land space that they're built on. But since they built that course, I think it's been in play for a year. I don't remember the rounds of golf they've had, but they've had a tremendous amount of success and a lot of play out there, simply for the younger people that are learning to play, seniors who don't want, can't make an 18-hole par 72 course. I'll be happy to give you, Brianne, I took her out there to take a look at the course, and she'd be happy to give you a tour because she now knows her way around the course. We took the golf part.
Is it different than an executive course, though, or is it the same?
Oh, yeah. An executive course is usually somewhere between that par 62 and Red Reef.
Okay, yeah.
It's not, an executive course might be the nine-hole course that we've been talking about, which, according to the owner of this property, the reason why he didn't do a nine-hole course, he says, because you're eliminating some potential customers that would normally play a, that would play a course that had par fours and par threes on it. But if you, if you go to mostly a short course, you're going to lose some participation.
Gotcha.
I think we owe it to the public to at least, you know, really consider it once we do have the consultant for, you know, from this RFQ. And since we are talking about the RFQ, do we have a motion to go forward with that?
So moved.
Okay, in a second, please. You're on mute, Mr. Ernst.
Second.
Thank you. Is there more discussion?
Yeah, I do want to add, I totally agree with, Bob is so much more elegant than me on it. So, I, look, I don't, I don't want to confuse short course and executive course. I want something creative, a component of golf. That, that makes sense to me. Where, I don't know, but it's not in the traditional sense. That, that's where I'm trying to get at. I think that's, there's room for that out there, and we have to think of it in that way. And it's not just for, the golfing community is a very different, unique community, and I understand their desires and their needs. I also fully understand, you know, the history of Boca Tica, that why they would like to have a traditional golf course. Our plans were great, but they're not happening. I'm looking for something that we, that will be good for all of the community and that we collectively do have some city support for. So, this is a step in that direction.
Craig, the NGF calls it an alternative course.
Okay.
It's creative, it's unique. You don't see a lot of those, but it's becoming a very popular concept.
Alternative, that's a good word.
That's, that works.
Okay, so you did second, Mr. Ernst, right?
Yes, I did.
For the RFQ. Is there any further discussion, commissioners? Joanne, would you do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wollersay?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Mission passed.
Thank you, Joanne. Mr. Ernst, the approval of payroll and invoices, do I hear a motion, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a motion for payroll and invoices for the total amount of, oh, wait a minute, yeah, there it is, $2,126,052.95.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Do we have any discussion, Mr. Rollins?
Yes, ma'am. I note on the payment schedule is the O and M for October of 2020. We're about to go into our budget year, and we're about six months behind in our figures there. Any idea, Brianne, when we might get that caught up?
That's a good question, Commissioner Rollins. Making sure I was unmuted. Yes, I have asked, I have sent numerous emails. Jacob and I talked about this today, too. We have only received the October O and M. We're told that the city switched to a new system, so they're having a lot of issues trying to, trying to unwind that, I guess, and get it out to us. But we are about to go into budget season. One of the questions that came up for me over the weekend was, can we see where we're at? And not just by you, Commissioner Rollins, but another commissioner asked the same thing, can we see where we're at? And I unfortunately can't tell you where we're at as far as what the city spent because we don't have those numbers from them. I've talked to Michael about it on the phone. I've sent emails about it. I am not sure what else to do beyond that, other than marching over to Financial Services and asking Linda Davidson for a timeframe, but that's where we're at. We're with October and nothing else.
Are you comfortable going over there to Linda Davidson?
I'll call her and see if she can give me a timeline, sure.
That would be nice because six months is a lot. Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, while you're asking her that information, do you have any idea if the city obtained any PPP funding for their payroll?
I don't know if they received it for payroll, but I'll put that in and ask for it.
And then, the other thing is, while you're asking, from an expense standpoint, since we haven't seen anything since October, are we paying for a full staff here at, you know, Sugar Sand Park? Is it staffed the same as it was before the pandemic? And then, if so, what's the job description of these folks?
I will, I will talk to Michael about that. I know they have not, all the full-time and part-time positions, there's been no layoffs or any sort of time off that's been unpaid. So, I will talk to Michael and see. I know some staff have been assigned to other areas, and I think they have to sort out who's paying for what, but I, I'll follow up and see where we're at with that.
Yeah, I certainly don't ask this question because of, I'm happy that the folks remain employed, but if they weren't reassigned, I'd like to know why. You know, if they're, we don't need a full staff at this facility since it's been closed. So, thank you for investigating that.
We also pay overhead for everybody, so if they're working at different facilities, we should look at that. If they're working at city facilities instead of district facilities, that changes the overhead cost, too, so we'll look at all that and see.
Thank you, thank you for checking that out.
Good point, Mr. Rollins. Any other commissioners want to weigh in?
Just an observation.
Yes, sir.
The group, in 2019, you know, I was looking at the transfers to and from the state board. In 2019, we earned $481,000 in interest. In 2020, we had $211,000 in interest, almost half. Year-to-date this year, we're at about $15,653. There is no interest earnings, so it's not a good year from that standpoint. When I look at the transfers into the SBA, just so you know, in 2019, it looked like for the tax revenue of that, it was like $18,006, roughly. But for this past year, our tax revenue transferred in looks to me like $19,003. So, just saying, that's your cash basis of things. If you spend with the city 14, 15 million, the rest of it is mostly capital-type things. So, this, it's a thin budget, folks.
Craig, thank you for doing your job. You're doing a great job as treasurer.
You do.
Thank you.
Joanne, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Wollersay?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Mission passed.
Okay, reports and discussion items, Ms. Harms?
Commissioners, we sent the verity agreement over to the school board, so they're going to put that on their agenda for June 23rd, for their June 23rd meeting for the school board to approve the agreement for verity to use our facilities next fall. The audit was complete. We sent a copy out to everybody. It's been certified now. Everybody will get a printed copy at our next, our first in-person meeting. If that's the path we choose to go, that's another comment I have. There were no comments in the audit, there were no recommendations in our audit this year and nothing from last year to correct this year. So, we're all set there. As far as updates on our projects at Boca Tica, the storage tanks are now gone, which is great. The debris removal at the maintenance building has started and is continuing. There's a lot of debris out there that they're taking out. The tree trimming on the west side of the course is going to start later this week and early next week. They finished the pressure cleaning at the front entrance. The carbon work at the front entrance was completed, and they're painting the front entrance this week, and then they're working on the irrigation plan. We should get that this week as well for the, for the front entrance. As far as the Swimming Racket Center, the pool deck resurfacing started today. They're going to break for Memorial Weekend and then continue after that. So, they should be done before the July 4th weekend in total. At Gumbo Limbo, they're working on the restroom renovation design. That's going to be completed. That was part of the work that was planned this fiscal year. We approved nearly $1 million in renovations at the Gumbo Limbo facility, aside from the pipes and pumping project. There were some comments that were made at the strategic planning session that the city council had about us continuing with the master plan at Gumbo Limbo. And for the, for the public's clarity, we never had that moving forward. That was the Friends of Gumbo Limbo who worked on the master plan, and the city has tasked us with just renovating the facility, so that's what we're funding right now. We're not, as far as I know, when I spoke to Michael Calvert, they've not moved forward with any plans for a master plan at Gumbo Limbo. It's the city's facility, so we are funding these repairs to keep that facility going. And again, nearly $1 million this year on the air conditioning, the roofing, and also the restroom renovations. And then, I had planned to bring up the fact that we don't have any of our invoices other than October right now. So, as we start to think about the budget cycle, I'm hopeful that we can get those soon from the city so that we can see where we're at, and it helps us, obviously, from a budgeting standpoint, to know what's being spent or not being spent. With that, we also need to work on a couple of things that I wanted to bring up and just something to think about. The work at Ocean Breeze is going to be done in a couple of months, and after that, we're going to have a lot more maintenance out there as far as keeping the trees up, keeping the edging trimmed. So, our current maintenance program that we have out there is just cutting the grass, and we'd like to do a little bit more since it's going to be visible from the streets as far as the grass, the areas that are going to be resotted and smoothed out with the split rail fencing. So, we'd like to go out for an RFP for, to hire another maintenance company or to solicit new bids for the maintenance of Ocean Breeze as it will look once this work is completed, because we do feel like there's a need there to do something beyond just cutting the grass at that point. So, I wanted to put that forth as a future agenda item, if possible. Make sure I get everything in here. Additionally, I wanted to talk about, we've had some interest from the, from the public as far as doing presentations from their RFI submittals and what I had talked to our chair about, and we can open this up if she chooses to do so, but one of the things we discussed was letting, once we hire somebody to design the park, they can review those RFIs, and then we can ask the public if, or ask the proposers or set something up at that point to do a presentation of the RFIs when we have a designer onboard. I don't know if you wanted to talk about that more, Madam Chair.
Commissioners, what do you think about having a specific meeting to hear what our consultant will have to say, and also maybe some of the people who had responded to the RFIs? Would you consider having a separate meeting for that, or do you want to incorporate that into a regular meeting? Don't all jump in at once.
If I could, Mr. Hurd mentioned in public comment, he wants to present what he submitted in the RFI to our board, and what we'd like to do is give that, obviously, that opportunity to other RFI respondents if we're going to move forward with that. So, the thought was to hire the design firm, and then they could look at some of those proposals and, and work from there.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Engel.
Yeah, I'd like to see Mr. Hurd's proposal and proposal of some others. I don't know, can we get, can we fit all? I don't know, can we get, can we fit all of, all the proposals into a regular meeting or even an extra meeting for that, that matter?
That will be a challenge. We did talk to Mr. Horowitz about that, because everybody will have to be included who wants to respond.
So, you know, we could end up having a goal-setting meeting, something like what City Council had, and I'd need to bring a clean shirt and a toothbrush.
Commissioner Wright, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I mean, we're, I mean, we're pretty, we, we usually would want to have like a public input kind of meeting anyway, at least one or two of them anyway, right? I mean, we asked, we did an RFI, but, I mean, can't we just do a public input and, you know, meeting for anybody and limit it, limit the, the presentations to five minutes so that everybody has an equal amount of time, and that anybody who wants to present anything in terms of coming from the public can do that. Not limited to just the RFI responders, but, you know, maybe somebody didn't see the RFI or didn't hear about it, or whatever, and then they, they know we hired a master planner, and this is their opportunity to come and, and speak or do some sort of presentation.
Sounds like a plan. Mr. Rollins?
Give me a minute, go to the next person.
Mr. Ernst?
I, I think it's a good idea, if you, you, I'm conscious of the fact, if you invite one party, you need to invite all parties, so you can't single one out and say, I only want to see this one. So let's, it would be nice if you arrange two or three public inputs. I would do them in a separate meeting, only because that way everyone knows the dates, and it's not moving around, and they're there specifically for that purpose. So, and then you also give those RFI respondents opportunity to, opportunity to shine, or whatever they want to do, and they, if they can't make a certain date, they have another date. So at least one or two dates, and then I'd follow it up with, hopefully, the people who win the RFQ are listening in and paying attention to it, so they should also do their due diligence to pay.
Well, we will have them there at the meeting. The, the consultants will be there at the meeting.
Okay, so we'll schedule that, once we have the designer on, on board.
You want to speak, Mr. Rollins?
No, I'll hold my water till Commissioner's report.
Okay.
My, my last item was talking about our, our meetings and how we want to move forward if we're ready to go back to in-person meetings starting in June, and, and if we're, if everybody's ready to go back to the Swim and Racket Center, or how you'd like to proceed.
Well, I'm perfectly comfortable going back to the Swim and Racket Center. Brienne and Melissa and Joanne have set up something so that there are partitions between us. Mr. Rollins?
I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but I will say that I have had my vaccine, and I'm harmless.
You're never harmless.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome. I, I missed the Swim and Racket Center. It had, you know, that was ours. This is kind of like, even though it's ours, I feel like we're borrowing it. So, if we go back to, I have no problem going back to in-person meetings, fully vaccinated and just as harmless as Commissioner Rollins.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Commissioner Wright?
I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm fully vaccinated as well. The only thing, I, I suggest we kind of go with the CDC guidelines, and that we request that if you are not vaccinated, that you do wear a mask. I mean, I think in terms of just following guidelines, we should do that. And so, yeah, I am fine with going Swim and Racket. I will be out for two meetings in July, though, so I will not be there, so I will hopefully be online if I have internet access.
Great. Okay, Mr. Ernst?
Yep, I'm vaccinated, I'm fine with meeting at Swim and Racket.
Good.
Do we want to still allow for the public participation in a hybrid format, so that people who don't feel comfortable coming in, we would like, we could test that and see if we can make that an option for the, for the future meetings?
Let's do that.
Okay.
Okay.
That is everything I had.
Thank you, Ms. Harms. Mr. Horowitz, our District Council.
Thank you, Madam Chair, good evening, Commissioners. Just one brief comment to follow up on the last item that Ms. Harms presented. The governor recently signed an executive order invalidating all local rules, regulations, and restrictions with regards to the COVID pandemic. That, that being said, we certainly are in a good posture to go back to our normal meetings at the Swim and Racket Club. I would just offer, with regards to requiring masks, we know under the governor's order that local government can no longer require masks be worn at public meetings, we could certainly encourage it, we can certainly state that it would be appreciated, but we would not recommend not having it as a requirement to attend those meetings, the same with taking temperature checks. But, but that aside, Brienne is a tough act to follow, and I have nothing further to add. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Horowitz. Commissioners, let's start with Commissioner Wright.
Yeah, so I was thinking about, and the needs assessment, and that, like, one of the major things that came out of it was marketing. And I think we need to maybe do something about that, and I'm not sure exactly what the solution is. I don't know if the solution is hiring one person for, you know, beach and parks, or if it's maybe kind of working with the city's Parks and Rec Department. Oh, go ahead, Brienne, did you want to say something?
I was just going to say, the, the district actually does fund a full-time marketing position at Sugar Sand, so I just wanted to have that perspective for you before we continue, before you continue, that we do actually fund a full-time position, so.
Okay. Well, I don't know, but that's just for Sugar Sand and their, their programs?
But is it something that could be expanded on? That's something we could probably talk to the city about.
Yeah, I mean, I think it needs to encompass, like, all beaches, all parks, all recreation, like, it needs to be one cohesive, maybe that position can be expanded. But I think, because I don't think it makes sense to have one person for beach and parks and one person for the city, and them not work together, you know what I mean? Especially after the needs assessment. So maybe you can go talk to the city, the city staff, Michael, and just see kind of what he's thinking might be the best thing to do. Because I think it's sorely lacking, especially with people not knowing what programs we have available in parks, and, you know, I mean, we, we really need to work on that, so that was kind of something I thought we should discuss.
Budget time is a good time to bring that up, so I will talk to Michael and see where they're at.
Okay.
Anything else, Erin?
I don't think so, that was it.
Thank you. Mr. Ernst?
Madam Chair, that's my same takeaway as Erin, is that, that's the communication and the community, that a lot of people don't know where the pocket parks are, they're not our parks necessarily, but it doesn't matter whose parks they are, most community just don't know, but they need to know more about it. One thing I will say is that, you know, Sugar Sand always came across strong, and still continues to come across strong. In fact, it came across so strong this morning, when I was at Home Depot returning something, someone noticed, oh, you're with the city, because I had my shirt on for the day, and the observation was, when will the carousel open? I don't understand why it's, the carousel continues to be closed when all parks, other parks are open, and it was a focal point that they really enjoyed. So I guess I would turn it over to Brienne if she could, you know, nudge our friends at the city that it's time to open the carousels, time to open the playgrounds, and kind of move forward with it. And as far as that goes, the Science Exploratorium is probably a little bit early to do anything there with an exhibit or something, but we should start thinking about reordering for when the next event will come down the road.
Brienne?
Actually, because we talked about this earlier, Commissioner Ernst, they're working on the first week of June, opening up the carousel and some of those other areas.
Great.
There is a plan in place.
That, that right there is your good marketing communication, I hope they send something out on that one.
I'm sure it'll, I'm sure they will have that on social media.
Good.
Mr. Engel?
Where to begin? I got an opportunity to watch City Council goal-setting, and I watched particularly at the five-hour, fifteen-minute mark, and once again, I felt like a target. I, I want to make clear to the city that we want to be your partner, and I, and I've said this time and time again, I don't care if we're the junior partner, we're the assistant junior partner, I don't care how it works, but we want to be your partners. We want to be your partners in developing a master plan for all the parks in the city, and that includes the parks in the district. And because, as was mentioned before, because we don't have a consensus on a particular item, on a particular project at this moment in time, doesn't mean we won't arrive at a consensus. We're all entitled to our different opinions, and we do have different opinions from time to time. As collegial as this commission is, we're all of individual minds. So, I, I welcome input from the city, but getting, taking, being the targeted potshots is getting a bit tiresome. So, you know, take us for what we're worth, we're, we're your partners. We work, we want to work together with you. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins.
Madam Chairman, thank you very much. I have a little checklist here of things, so if you'll be patient with me. This is, I had a good opportunity over the weekend to sit and reflect on the Beach and Park District and where it's come from since I first got on the commission. We would meet in Patch Reef, if you've ever been over to the Community Center in Patch Reef, there's a little small conference room in there, and we could not have had social distancing at the table with the Commissioners, it was so small, and there were only about eight chairs in there, so I long for those days sometimes, when we're being challenged by the public. But flash forward to looking at the things that we have done for the community, starting with Patch Reef, the pickleball, we've responded to that need, to the soccer fields, we've responded to the Lacrosse's request for sports turf, which is state-of-the-art sports turf. Spanish River, the city handed that project over to us when the drawings were sixty-five percent completed, and we finished that on time and well under the city's budget at the time. I've traveled around a lot of the parks in the Tri-County area, as those of you who have had kids that played in the competitive soccer program. I've had people who have come to me and said, Sugar Sand Park, there's nothing like it. I think we have one of the best park systems in the state, and probably ranked very high in the country with the facilities that we're providing. I, I think we're the jewels and the crown of the Parks and Rec system here in the city of Boca. And I, I just want to go on record that I think we have met the needs of our public very well. When Boca Hoops was frustrated with the lack of space, we built a fieldhouse. We do have another, before we got diverted to Ocean Breeze, we had another fieldhouse planned, which I think we're sorely needing another fieldhouse. It's going to go in between this community center as well as the existing fieldhouse. So I just want everybody to be thankful for what we've done for the community. I don't want to get, I don't want to pat on the back, I don't need any credit for it, but I think that the district has done a very nice job in meeting the recreational needs of the, of the city. I, I want to mention, there was a question that came up regarding us leasing property, and Sam addressed that at a joint meeting, but I want to read to you the final sentence that we got from the Senior Assistant Attorney General when we asked if we could lease property. It said, based on the foregoing, and I'm sure Brienne can give you a copy of this letter, the Greater Boca John Beach and Park District does not have legal authority to sell, lease, or other way convey real property owned by the district, period. I, I don't know that there's any workaround on that, I don't know that we want explorative workaround on it, but that's what the State Attorney General had to say about that question that was raised during our joint meeting. The other item I want to bring up is the activities report that we used to get. I haven't seen one of those, and sometimes, Brienne, it gives us a, a measure of what's going on in our parks. And while we haven't had any community centers open, we have had a lot of activities on the, on the playing services at Patch Reef, as well as DeHornley, and I think we need to be getting back, make sure that now that COVID is winding down, and then we start opening facilities, we start getting those activity reports like we had. And I want to close with, with this, and kind of follow up with Steve with a, an iron fist and a velvet glove, as they would say, is I listened to the workshop that the City Council had, and, and I was quite surprised to hear the criticism of the district not participating, the overall recreation master plan. It, it was as though we had been asked that question and had agreed to do that. I don't disagree that it's a, it's something that says it be seriously considered, our participation in that, because we have the largest parcel on developed property. But I was, I was frustrated to hear that, you know, we're described as myopic, which I don't think that description fits us very well. I, I, I thought that it was undeserving, the, the criticism we got, because we had never been asked to participate. We talked about that Recreation Master Plan, but we were never actually asked to participate, and the forum that we had there probably wasn't the best place for us, because it was something that we'd have to pass a motion on to spend money on. So it'd be something that we could do at this, at our regular meeting. So the upshot of that is, everybody seemed to be on the same page, that we had flip-flopped on, on that issue, and I don't know how that conclusion was, had, had been arrived at, because that's the furthest thing from the truth. Now, we will be getting, if, if the city follows through on it, we will be getting a letter from Mr. Nell asking us that question, and I think we need to be thinking about the answer. I think that it does make some sense. At the same time, we're doing this RFQ. I, I know the city also released a, and is in the process of hiring a, a architect to develop Phase Two at DeHornley. I, I, I don't, I'm not sure why we're being criticized for doing the same thing that they're doing. With that said, I'm certainly a willing partner, I'm certainly willing to receive phone calls, I'm certainly willing to return phone calls about the subject, but the criticism was undeserved and unappreciated, and that's all I got to say about that.
I do have one question for Brienne. Where do we stand on the soccer fields at Verdi? We were talking about developing something over there, is that in that school board agreement?
No, that's just the, the use, for them to use our facilities in the fall. That's another conversation that we have to have with the principal, and also with some of the school board employees, like Michael Owens, we'll talk to them about how we can work something out. You know, one of the things that we've talked about putting in the budget next year is, is doing an RF, RFQ, to have a, an architect engineer onboard that we can refer to when we need certain things done, like if we wanted to add pickleball courts somewhere else, or if we wanted to put in lights somewhere, we would have a, an architect engineer under contract with the district. And one of the things Melissa and I had talked about putting into the budget was putting out an RFQ next year so that we could add that to our budget, so we have somebody on hand who could go to Verdi and say, this is not regulation, this is what you're going to have to do here, and kind of give us an idea of what we're looking at for investment. So that's something that is going to be a little more comprehensive to look at and examine how we would, you know, work with the school district on developing that or using that park.
Would this be somebody on a per diem basis or on a salary basis?
That's a per diem, that was something, that was something we thought about putting out there, is that they would be used when we needed them, and, and no retainers, nothing like that, it would just be as needed.
If, if I may, Madam Chair, on that point?
Yes, Mr. Horowitz.
Thank you, just to follow up, you know, the statute that governs engaging architects and land planners and surveyors and other professional services providers, which is the process we're using for the RFQ for Ocean Breeze, it contemplates what's called the Continuing Services Contract, where you go through the same process under the statute, you can engage a professional service provider under a continuing contract, and there are certain dollar thresholds in the statute by which you could essentially have that person available to use for projects that fall within certain thresholds, both for construction.
for projects that fall within certain thresholds, both for construction costs and for study costs. Doesn't obligate you to spend any funds. But once you go through the process to procure that individual, you then have that person under contract for a whole host of projects that they may be qualified to do. So it is an option that state law does allow, assuming you follow the certain statutory process to get to that conclusion. It's something that we've discussed with Brienne, and we certainly support moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Horowitz.
Thank you.
Brienne, I got, I just need some clarification. Are we going to go out for a bid for maintenance at Ocean Strand as well as?
It's something I'd like, the, right now, tonight, I just talked about Ocean Strand. I mean, Ocean Breeze, wow, too many oceans. Just tonight, I talked about putting on the agenda for Ocean Breeze because that work is going to be done in the next couple of months. And we'd like to have a new maintenance person in place or the same maintenance person with a new contract in place so that the things are, the trees, everything is maintained more adequately for the public view.
And would that be on our next meeting in June, our first meeting in June?
I can work to get it out there so you guys will have a chance to look at it in time, yes.
Okay, are there any other future agenda items you'd like to see in June?
We talked about record, but I guess we'll put that on when when the other are, when everybody gets a chance to respond from the RFIs, so that's not one. That was the only thing I had upcoming.
I think you should have the invoices on there, Brienne, because to go almost nine months without invoices, yeah, we need to, you know.
Have a discussion or?
Well, we're going into the budget season, so we need to know if we're on target or not for this past year, so that's kind of important.
Okay, okay, we'll do a budget update for the next meeting.
And if you don't mind, Madam Chair, I just want to piggyback on Bob's comments.
Please do.
I I I never heard any requests for, you know, us to participate in the master plan. So I don't know what, I mean, the concept is kind of thrown out there as a discussion item as a next step, but never, it was, I don't know what what the conversation, where that came from that said, you know, we're not participating or doing something different. I look at this whole, our RFQ is just kind of assembling the ideas and getting a better shape and feel around it. But it's not to exclude anyone or anything. It's on, it's independent of the the bigger picture. I think you, we talked about it earlier, is that the number one thing out of that needs assessment was the marketing is a problem. And then separately is the opportunity to better think through the long run for all the parks and what we're doing. But I got to tell you, as someone who does planning, it's kind of hard to plan unless you're doing 95 and you know you're going to keep expanding it. You know, you can only look forward for what your budget is in the next five years, tops. You know, going 10 years is a pipe dream. And the golf course or Ocean Breeze was not in our 10-year plan. So it was an opportunity that came about, and we took advantage of it. And I think we have something that we can make really great, so.
Yes, Brienne.
Some of the comments that council members made referenced a summary of a meeting that we have, our last meeting that we had, where we talked about putting out this RFQ. And some council members made their comments about the reluctance of us to do a master plan and all that based upon the summary. The summary that was sent to them was really a a mischaracterization of a conversation I had with Mr. Calvert. So I think that they were not given maybe the most accurate information or summary of our meeting because we didn't even discuss the master plan at any point or deny or accept it. So I I'll talk to Michael and see if that's something they're going to put in the budget for next year. I don't see it happening with any expediency. But we'll talk to them and see what their plans are, if they're going to go out and hire somebody new to do that or what their plan was.
Mr. Rollins, you had your hand up?
Yeah, to Craig's point, anything that we plan is is capital cost and operations cost. And within our budget and with our avant-garde revenue, we're limited as to what we can do and how soon. So, you know, a long-term plan is 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 probably the answer. But even that, as we know, pickleball wasn't even on the horizon five years ago. And look where it is now. So I I I think that, you know, it's a good idea to have a vision and a and a thought process and a plan. But I think that flexibility will be the key to that as well as the economics of it.
All righty.
Did Erin want something?
Yeah, Erin, did you have your hand up?
I was just going to ask Brienne if she had that summary that the city council members got so that we could just take a look at it.
I will send it out. It's it's not, it's not a summary of our meeting.
Yes, Mr. Rollins?
One more question. I know that the city manager had sent a letter to the, the city council covering the topics of our our previous meeting. And if you would get a copy of that letter, Brienne, I'd like to see that.
That's what I was referencing. It wasn't a letter, it was a summary of a conversation that I had with the with the Recreation Director that was actually really taken out of context and mischaracterized. So it wasn't actually a summary of our meeting. And I'm not sure why they thought that, but it was inaccurate at best.
Well, as Erin said, we'd like to have a copy of it.
I will forward that out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brienne. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Engel?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Joanne, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Vosson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned, stay safe, and we'll see you on June 7th. Take care, everybody.
Thank you, have a good night, everyone.
Good night.